To the word of God. Father, in the name of Jesus, again, we come with hearts of thanksgiving. We come with the praise on our lips, oh God. We just come just with gratitude, oh God, for who you are and to worship you for who you are. Now, Father, tonight, as we sit together and we learn, um, tonight, we ask that you be in our midst. And let everything that is said and done be pleasing to you, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Now have your way, in the mighty name of Jesus. Holy Spirit, you are welcome. Have your way, move, teach, talk, however it is that you see fit, in the name of Jesus. And I yield to you, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Alrighty, so we just have, like I said, a, uh, just two sections left, um, on our syllabus. And then we are going to do a recap. We're going to just kind of recap some things. But section seven, uh, on your syllabus, uh, was kicking over sacred cows. Um, I'm gonna be the first to admit, I, I say, what, what is the definition of that kicking over sacred cows? I kind of had an idea in my mind, but I wasn't, you know, exactly sure what it was meaning concerning the biblical, um, thing. And I kept pondering that. So I said, well, you know what? Let's just look that up. Let's research that. Let's see what it says about it. So, the kicking over sacred cows, it says, it involves examining traditions that may be based on human ideas. Did you catch that? Human ideas rather than scripture. And that can lead to spiritual bondage instead of the truth. And I thought about that as well. When it says can lead to spiritual bondage instead of truth, I know a lot of us, when we talk about growing up, I, I know I grew up in the, in a faith, um, that was so restrictive, but it was tradition. It wasn't biblical, it was traditions. And it was traditions of men, okay? And so, you know, you can't do this, you can't wear pants, you can't wear this, you can't... So, again, and that was just me, I'm speaking of me. Um, but it put me in bondage. Um, and for a long time, um, I was kind of upset. I'll be very honest about that, you know? And I thought, well, if this is what it's all about, you can't do this, can't do that, can't do this, can't do that. You know, if everything was can't, then what was, you know, what was the cans, you know? But oh, hallelujah! When you get that revelation knowledge, and you get a revelation of what the word says, and not what man says and man's traditions, then you are out of bondage. And I remember, I remember like it was yesterday. I remember when, um, the Holy Spirit, when I got released of that, um, and was set free of the traditions. And I kicked over those sacred cows. Praise God. So, again, the kicking over the sacred cows, it means having the courage to question traditions and beliefs that may have become unquestionable, especially if they contradict biblical principles. Seeking true meaning, the goal is to seek the actual meaning of scripture and to be set free from the bondage of wrong interpretations. Can we say amen about it? So, on, according to our syllabus here, um, the first one is Paul's thorn in the flesh. You know, for many, many times, I don't, um, me, the thorn in the flesh. I, I, I really, really thought that had to do with sickness and disease. I thought it meant Paul was sick, you know? Um, but again, when you get a revelation knowledge of what it means. So here in 2 Corinthians, chapter 12, 7 through 10, if you'll turn there with me. 2 Corinthians, chapter 12, 7 through 10. And this is speaking about Paul's thorn in the flesh. Say amen when you have it. Verse 7 says, "And lest I, Paul, should be exalted above measure through the abundance of the revelations, there was given to me a thorn in the flesh, the messenger of Satan to buffet me, lest I should be exalted above measure. For this thing I besought the Lord thrice," three times, he said, "that it might depart from me." Verse 9, "And he said unto me, My grace is sufficient for thee; for my strength is made perfect in weakness. Most gladly therefore will I rather glory in my infirmities than the power of, that the power of Christ may rest upon me. Therefore I take pleasure in infirmities and reproaches and necessities and persecutions and distresses for Christ's sake; for when I am weak, then I am strong." Because of this very passage of scripture, the thought is widely held that Paul had a sickness which God refused to heal, but we know that is not true. This teaching has led many to believe that it must be God's will for some of his saints to be sick. And it has held people in bondage when they should be delivered. But we know that that is not God's will for any of his saints to be sick. Amen? So what was Paul's thorn in the flesh? I'm glad you asked. It is true that God permitted this thorn in the flesh to come upon Paul, but it was not from God. The scripture says that a messenger of Satan was permitted to buffet him. The Bible does not say that this thorn in the flesh was a sickness. As mentioned in the other chapters, thorn in the flesh is used elsewhere in the Bible. Before the children of Israel went into Canaan's land, God told them to destroy the inhabitants of the country, the Canaanites. He said if they didn't destroy the Canaanites, it would cause them trouble in the future. That, that the Canaanites would be a thorn in their side. So we see here that the thorn in the side is not sickness and disease. Cause it is not God's will for anyone to be sick. So we gonna do what? Kick over that sacred cow. Alright? Now, one last thing about this with Paul. What purpose did Paul's thorn serve? Cause you, you, you asked a question, or at least I know that I asked a question. Why was the thorn of the, uh, Paul's thorn there? Why then did God permit this thorn in the flesh to buffet Paul? The scriptures say it was to keep Paul from developing a tendency to be prideful about the revelations and visions he'd had. And that's in the Word, 2 Corinthians 12 and 7. You can find that there. So the thorn in Paul's side was not sickness. You know, men of, it, there were all kinds of things that they said that Paul had. They said he had a disease in his eyes, and that he had, um, pus in his eyes. And then it went on to say, now, if Paul was coming to you to lay his hands on you for healing, and he got all this going on in his own body, do you wanna receive that in the name of Jesus? So you have to think about that. But it was not sickness and disease, and God did not put that up on Paul. The messenger was from Satan, and it was from Satan. Um, so that is a sacred cow, amen, that we can kick over. Amen? Because we know the scripture tells us something different. Amen? And part B and C here, we're gonna combine. B is the chastening of the Lord, and C was Job's situation. These were the last two sacred cows, kicking over sacred cows. Amen? Okay, so the chastening of the Lord. Brother Hagan says here, the word chasten in the Greek means to child train or to educate. To child tra-train or to educate. Here in the book of Hebrews 12 and 6, the question was asked of Brother Hagan. Why in the book of Hebrews it says, whom the Lord loveth, he chasteneth? That's Hebrew 12:6. And Brother Hagan said, no, I didn't forget that that was there in the scripture. He said, that's still in there. But it doesn't say whom the Lord loveth, he makes sick. It doesn't say that. You see, people have put their own interpretations on that verse. But again, the word chasten in the Greek means to child train or to educate. We train our children, don't we? We send them to school to be educated, right? But have you ever told a teacher, if my child doesn't do right, knock his eye out? Have you ever said, if he is disobedient, break his leg? Or give him cancer? No, no. That isn't the way you discipline or train a child. And that's not the way God does it either. Amen? And the last one on Job's situation. We're looking at Job's problem, Job's 1:21 and 22. But we're, before we go there, it says, God doesn't use sickness and disease to teach his children a lesson. No, he does not. But God made Job sick, someone said. Reverend Hagan says, no, he didn't. The devil did. Yes, but God gave the devil permission. True, but God didn't commission it. You see, God will permit you to rob a gas station, but he won't commission you to do it. Okay? No, the Bible is plain about why sickness came upon Job. Job had said, this is in Job 3:25, "The thing which I greatly feared is come upon me, and that which I was afraid of is come unto me." That's Job 3:25. "So he himself opened the door to the devil by being afraid." That's the word. Amen? So again, we see that these sacred cows, again, are traditional. They're man's thoughts. But we know according to the word of God, hallelujah, what the word says about sickness and disease. And God does not put that on us. God didn't permit it, and God is not having it. And we don't have to have it. We don't have to tolerate it. Because we have the word of God that tells us exactly what his will is, and that is that all will be healed, and that all are well. And that he will heal every manner of sickness and disease, no matter what it is. That there is nothing beyond the reach of God's and God's word that he cannot, that we cannot... And guess what? We have that power in our tongue. We have that power to speak that word of God, and we have the authority given us, in the name of Jesus, that we can speak to whatever that mountain is, and whatever that sickness and disease is. We've got the power in our mouth and on our tongue to speak it. And guess what? The mountain and whatever it is, and whatever your mountain is, it's got to be removed. It cannot stay there. It cannot, it cannot just say, well, I'm gonna stay there. Cause the, no, because we said, the word of God tells us to speak to that mountain. Say something to that mountain. We know that faith has a voice, and we have to speak to that mountain. And then it says, cast it into the sea. And it says, if we believe and don't doubt in our heart, hallelujah! If we believe and don't doubt, then we can have whatever it is that we say. Amen? Hallelujah! I'm getting a little ahead of myself, cause I get excited about that. Cause that Mark 11:23, that's one of my favorite ver- uh, verses in, in the, in the word of God. Because it tells us that we can open up our mouths, and we can speak to that thing. And we can say, we can command it by the authority given us in the name of Jesus. We have authority. We're not just somebody that's sitting by the wayside and don't have, uh, nothing. But we have authority in the name of Jesus. It's called the unama. And that's the character and the name of Jesus. We have the authority. And we can speak to whatever it is, in the name of Jesus. And you know what? When we begin to do that, Jesus said, woo! The angels begin to harken to the word of God. They begin to move. They begin to, uh, things begin to shift and begin to change. And it says, we have that authority in the name of Jesus. Have you ever been in a situation when you just begin to call on the name Jesus? Just call Jesus. Call Jesus. Say, Jesus, there's a mountain there that is in my way. And, and that old song say, climb, climb. I don't have time to climb no mountains. I need the mountain to move. I don't have time to climb or to be going up no rough side of the mountain. But I have the authority in the word of God to speak to it, say something to it. And guess what? It's got to move in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah! Is anybody in agreement with me on that? Praise the Lord! Speak to your mountain, because it is God's will that you be healed in the name of Jesus. It's his will. He doesn't want any of us to be sick in the name of Jesus. But do you have the faith to believe that you receive, no matter what it is? When the doctor says it's one thing? But do you have the faith to believe what the report of the word of the Lord says? Do you have the faith to believe what the report of the Lord says? When the doctor told me, will you have gout, and you gonna have it for the rest of your life? I said, oh, no, no, no. No, that's not what the word of God says. And he says, this pain will be there, and you will be using that cane. Glory, hallelujah! I know you all saw me around here walking around with a cane. But you know what? I kept speaking and saying that word of God. The word of God says that I am healed from the crown of my head to the soul of my feet. And it says that no matter what it is, no matter what the manner of sickness or disease is, God will do it, if you believe that you receive. But you got to believe it. You gotta believe it even before it happens. So even when I was on that cane, I was walking around, I was like, you know what? I believe the word of God. The word of God says that I'm healed, and I'm not gonna have this pain in the name of Jesus. I had my kids, and I said, I might have these Hoka tennis shoes on, hallelujah! But I'm healed in the name of Jesus. I'm pain-free in the name of Jesus. And guess what? Since I began to say that, I've not had that. I went to the doctor, he said, well, have you had any attacks? I said, absolutely not. He looked at me, I, I said, you wanna know why? You wanna know why? Because the word of God says that if I believe what the word of God says, and I speak that out of my mouth, and believe that in my heart, that I can have whatever it is that I say, according to the word of God. And the word of God says that I'm healed. The word of God says that I'm healed. I'm set free in the name of Jesus. Praise the Lord! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! And it's the same for you, and you, and you, and you, and you. The word of God works. The power of life and death are in the tongue. So whatever you say, if you believe it, you shall receive it in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah! Whatever it is that you say, you just believe that you receive it in the name of Jesus. Glory to God! Glory to God! Glory to God! Know that it is his will that you be healed in the name of Jesus. Know that! Know that it is nothing that he wants for you to have or to be sick, or nothing for you to carry. Cause he said in his word, he said, if you believe and you speak to that... I believed it before I saw it. I believed it before I received it, in the name of Jesus. Why? Because the word of God said it. And because the word says it, I can have whatever it is that I say, in the name of Jesus. I can have whatever it is that I say, as long as it's according to the word of God. Amen? Yes! So healing is a forever subtle subject in the name of Jesus. It's a gift from God. It's our, the healing is the children's bread. Hallelujah! It's the children's bread. He went about healing them all in the name of Jesus. God's word is medicine. Hallelujah! God's word is medicine. What does it say? His word does a good to a merry heart, and makes a merry heart, in the name of Jesus. Now, I'm gonna go over, like I said, I get excited about the word of Jesus. One thing I did wanna re, uh, bring out, the word redeem, exaggerostadoso, in the Greek, which means to compensate, regain possession of, ransom, or to buy off, payment, and to recover from the power of another. God has redeemed us from the curse of the law. For sickness, he's given us health. For poverty, he's given us wealth. For death, he's given us eternal life. Hallelujah! He's redeemed us and has set us free. Jesus worked on the cross. Hallelujah! Totally purchased our redemption and our freedom. He did it. He did it for me and for you, with his death, burial, and resurrection. Amen? Now, his word is medicine. Proverbs 4:20, 22 says, God's word is health to all thy flesh. He tells us to attend, means to give time to thought, meditation, and action. For they are life to those who find them, and healing and health to all their flesh. Amen? That's verse 22. God's word is the powerfulest medicine available today, and can heal your body without side effects. Hallelujah! Can heal your body without side effects. You know, I've been in the nursing field now for 27 years, so there's not a lot, like Mama Ross, there's not a lot that I have not seen in the medical field, in the medical community. Even as, when we give our patients medicine, or they prescribe medicine, number one, they don't know exactly what it was gonna do, what that medicine will do. We know what the goal is, amen? And we look on the side of the bottle. Have you ever done that? We looked on the side of the bottle. What does it say? Side effects. The side effects, sometimes, I have patients have told me, well, if I'm gonna get all this, I might as well not take the medicine. Because the side effects are more than what I have right now. The side effects to the medicine. Okay, now, I'm not taking anything away from doctors and nurses, cause I love us. In the name of Jesus. And God put us here for a reason, for doctors and nurses, okay? And the medical professional, amen? So I'm not taking anything away from the medical professional. So I wanna make that very clear and plain, amen? But God's word is the most powerfulest medicine. God tells us in Joshua 1 and 8 to meditate day and night. That don't mean just sometimes. That means meditate day and night. When you get up in the morning, you're meditating on the word of God. And the word says that he whose eyes is fixed on Jesus, whose mind is, is kept in perfect peace. Keep it stayed on thee. I know I got that jumping up a little bit, but you know what I'm talking about. You gotta keep your mind stayed on him. You gotta get up in the morning, and you gotta tell him, God, I acknowledge that you are here. I acknowledge that you are Lord and Savior of my life. I acknowledge that you have put the breath of life in my lungs, and I can get up. I know my name, and I can get up by myself, cause so many cannot. But you gotta acknowledge that and meditate on that. Sometimes throughout the day, when you going about your day, oh, Father, I thank you. I thank you. I thank you. Because you've allowed me to witness to somebody, or you have allowed me to be generous to somebody, and I have faith in your word, okay? You've allowed it. So I meditate on it, and I'm, and the word meditate, mutter, chew on it, digest it. I gave the analogy of what my grandfather used to say. He said, there more cows, he said, they out there just chewing and chewing, you know? Chewing the could, you know what they used to say, just chewing all... I mean, they would just chew and chew and chew and chew and chew. And then finally, they would swallow. Well, that's the way it is with the word of God. You gotta br- meditate on that word. You gotta chew it, you gotta mutter it, you gotta keep saying it. And then, when you swallow it and digest it, hallelujah, the word of God. But he tells us to do that. He tells us to meditate on his word, day and night. Meditate means to mutter or say repeatedly. Meditate means to mutter or say repeatedly. We cannot just say, "Oh, I'm healed in the name of Jesus, excuse me. I'm healed in the name of Jesus." Oh, praise the Lord, no. Open up your mouth and boldly declare and decree it, no matter if you feel it or if you don't. I am healed from the crown of my head to the soul of my feet. And my routine, I go through every morning, I say, every organ, every bone, every muscle, every nerve, every tendon, every cartilage, every joint is healed in the name of Jesus. I call it all out from the crown of my head. And I'll even go, I say, "And my eyes ain't dim," like Abraham said. My eyes are dim. My eyes are dim. Hallelujah. And I can open up my mouth and speak the word of God. I have the authority, and I have my being to be able to say that in the name of Jesus. Don't we serve a wonderful God that wants us healed and set free and delivered in the name of Jesus? Hallelujah. Glory, hallelujah. Woo, glory, hallelujah. Woo, I get excited about it. I don't know about you, but I know what He's done for me and all that He's done for me. And I can shout, "Hallelujah," because of what God has done for me, what He's delivered me from, what He set me free from in the name of Jesus. I don't pretend that I've always been in the house of God, cause I used to be out in another house. But now, I'm in the house of God, because He has saved me, set me free, and delivered me in the name of Jesus. And I'd like to go about and tell the world what it is that He's done for me, what He's done for me. I can tell you, I used to be that, but now I'm this. I used to do that, but now I do this. In the name of Jesus. God is so good, and He is so worthy. And I am not ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ. And everywhere I go, I'm gonna tell them, they say, "What, what you do?" I'm gonna tell them that it's God, that He saved me, He delivered me, He set me free, He healed me. And that word salvation means terrier. That means healing, salvation, preservation, deliverance, and all those things. Well, when I, when I was born again, I received all those things, the benefits, the benefits package. That's why I can bless Him. That's why I can say, "Hallelujah," because I have the benefit package of what God has done. It says, "He healed all of my diseases. He healed me from destruction. He guides me along the way." The benefit package, that's why I can say, "I will bless the Lord, all my soul and all that is within me, and I can bless Him at all times." Hallelujah, at all times. And because I am the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus, glory to God, hallelujah. There is no limit to what amount of God's medicine you can take. You can't overdose on God's medicine, hallelujah. The Bible is like medicine. It goes to work only when you apply it. Hallelujah. Just like the medicine in the natural, it will not do any good if you don't take it. Your medicine sitting over there on the nightstand will not do any good if you don't take it. That's just like that word of God, that Bible sitting over there on that nightstand. If you don't pick it up and read it, it won't do you any good in the name of Jesus. You gotta pick it up and read it, and study it, and meditate on it in the name of Jesus. Your medicine on the nightstand will not do any good if you don't take it. Are you taking your daily dosage of gospel pills? In the name of Jesus, hallelujah. Two ingredients need to receive your healing, and I'm gonna be closing it up. Believe. We already talked about this in Mark eleven twenty-four. In other words, you must believe you got it before you get it. The believing comes first, and receiving comes second. Believe means to trust, have faith in, be confident, and accept as true. Believers get healed by releasing their faith in the word of God. Mark nine twenty-three says, "If you can believe." The word of God said it, and that settles it, whether I understand it or not. Hallelujah. Receive means to accept what God has done. Act like it's so, to take and to have. Have you accepted God's provision of healing? If not, it's time for you to possess the promise of healing and enjoy health in every area of your life, because He paid the price for you to have it. Now, as I get ready to close, I'm gonna close a little bit early. I just want you to know that it is God's will that you are healed. Open up your mouth, know and say something. But as you begin to have your confessions, do you know you gotta have some confessions? You gotta speak your confessions over yourself. But you gotta have a scripture that you're standing on. You can't just be saying, "Oh, yeah, I'm healed, I'm whatever." But what scripture are you standing on? And I have, I have gone, there's times when there's like a prayer line, and you, you go up, and they say, "Well, what scripture are you believing God for?" I got my scriptures. Isaiah fifty-three, four, and five, "By his stripes I am healed." Not, "I'm gonna be healed." I was healed over two thousand years ago. I'm healed. First Peter two twenty-four, that he bore it in his own body, so that we don't have to bear it in ours. Amen? So you gotta have a scripture that you praying and that you're standing on. Instantaneous versus waiting for your healing. You have to know that everything doesn't come instantaneously. But then there's times when there's a suddenly, hallelujah. But you gotta believe. Are you confessing the word of God over yourself daily? That's something you have to do daily. You cannot just do it one time, don't pick it up. That's just like, you can't build a house in a storm. You build a house when the weather is cooperating, right? So that's why you're praying and confessing. Don't wait till the storm comes to try to build yourself up. You know, in Jude twenty says, "Building up yourself in your most holy faith, building yourself up." We must do that in the name of Jesus. Build yourself up. Build yourself up in the name of Jesus. And watch the word of God work for you, because it will work in the name of Jesus. Amen? Praise the Lord, amen?
I believe there's some fire in this Presbyterian church. Amen, praise God, hallelujah. Amen, praise God. If your faith hasn't risen, I don't know where you at. Hey man, I was trying to bite the side of that table out over there. But I need my teeth, so I ain't doing it. But we thank God for the word on healing, amen? How many you believe you are healed by the stripes of Jesus? Amen, praise God. If you were healed, then you is healed. And if you is healed, then you are healed. And so we thank God for His healing power. We thank God for Minister Margaret and the word and the anointing that she ministered that word and taught that word for us. But now it's opportunity to prosper, amen? Praise God. If you need an offering envelope, there should be one by you. If not, then one of our greeters will get you an offering envelope, amen? How many you know it's always a good time to sow? You can sow in the winter, you can sow in the summer, you can sow, uh, come on now, in the spring. Amen, you can sow in the fall. As long as the earth remain, there will always be seed, time, and harvest. That means He's gonna give you seed, and He's gonna give you the time to plant it. And when the harvest come, then you gotta get out there and get it, or it'll rot in the field. So we don't want our harvest rotting in the field, do we? Let's look at a couple of scriptures, amen? Because we always wanna give predicated upon the word of God. Hallelujah. You, how many you know God, He want us to give what we have? He's not gonna ask you to give something that He hadn't given unto us, amen? And then Mark twelve tells us that, in Mark twelve, I'm gonna read that verses forty-one through forty-four, just a portion of it. And Jesus points out this widow who was in the synagogue on the Sabbath, and all of the people came through, and they were giving out of their abundance. But this woman, she gave out of her want, amen? It was a sacrifice. All she had was those two mites. And then she put it in the offering. But Jesus took note of that. Can you just see Him in your mind's eye? Let your imagination go by. Don't let your imagination run away with you. Just go over there, get that with Jesus, and you can see Him sitting on that road, watching these people come in and put in their offering. And He sees this woman put in two mites, and then He used that as a teaching moment. So He turns to His disciples and say, "This woman has given all that she has, amen? But the others gave out of their abundance. So we should give what we have, what God has provided for us." Amen, praise God. How many you think about that, uh, that widow of Zeraphat? Come on now, somebody. Do you remember over in Kings, how Elijah was down at the brook cherish, amen? Uh, that's where God told him to go, right? And when he went down there, he sat there, and God fed him in the morning time, finally fed him at noonday. Amen, the brook was always running water. And then he had already prophesied it wasn't gonna rain for three and a half years, right? And so guess what? His word came to pass, because the, the brook cherish was fed by the Jordan. And when the Jordan dried up, the brook dried up. Amen, everything connected to the Jordan dried up. But God didn't forget Elijah. He didn't forget it. He said, "I want you to get to the widow of Zeraphat, and I have commanded." Come on now. God got somebody on the other side with him, so he went there. He went there. Now, why would God send somebody to this woman who ain't got none but a little flower? Well, come on now. And then she out there preparing to die. Amen, praise God. I say something, God is waiting on somebody right now. And he said, "But before you do that..." I love to read that, because you would've thought he said, would've said, "Don't die." But he didn't. What he said was, "Before you do that, fix me a little cake." Amen. She said, "What are you gonna do?" He's, she said, "I'm getting ready to fix me. I got this little meal, I'm gonna fix me and my son a cake, and we gonna die." I said, "Well, why wouldn't he say you got..." He said, "Fix me something." And that woman there never ran dry. What God is telling us today, bring what you have. He says, "And your storehouse will never run dry." Because we served a God of more than enough, amen? How many know He's the provider? Amen. He has the provision, and He will provide, amen? Let's lift our offering up to our high priest. His name is Jesus. Father, in the name of Jesus, thank you for giving us seed to sow. And as we sow, we don't do it begrudgingly or out of necessity, but with a cheerful prompt to do it hard, do we give. And as we give, Father, and sow our seed, it will be multiplied in the name of Jesus, and it will come back a great harvest. And Father, the harvest is not just for us, but for your kingdom to increase. And we give you all the praise, all the glory, all the honor for it. And we release our angels right now to go forth and bring us that which we have need of in the name of Jesus, all in agreement, say amen. Amen, you may receive the offering, amen, praise God. Hallelujah. Glory to God. And as they are preparing, amen, to receive your offering, we are thankful to the Lord. I don't want you to forget, excuse me. Well, it is right there. The devil is a... Well, anyway, uh, don't want you to forget, this Saturday, we are laying to rest. Miss Alicia Eubanks is laying her brother to rest, et cetera. And so, we want all of our ministry helps to be available to assist with that service, amen? And continue to keep them lifted up in prayer, amen? Pray that the Holy Spirit, the God of all, He's a confidential guard their hearts and their minds through Christ Jesus. Amen, praise God. Well, let's bow head, amen? Say, "Well, I prayed, that was Miss Margaret, that wasn't me." So let's pray, everybody. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this class. We thank you for the class on healing. And we thank you on the cla, for the class on faith. And we thank you for the class on worship. And we thank you for the class on righteousness, for it is predicated upon your word. And we know that your word does not go forth out of your mouth and return void, but it will accomplish what you sent it out to do. So we just thank you that you will anoint our ears tonight to hear, and our hearts to receive your engrafted word, so that we can grow up into the fullness and the measure and the stature of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And Father, we are so thankful to give you all the praise and glory for it in Jesus' name, all in agreement, say amen. Amen, praise God. So we talking about righteousness, amen? We're gonna be finishing up today. We'll get done a little bit early, praise God, cause this is the last section. We're gonna be talking about the works of righteousness. Just recap a little bit, amen? Praise God. How many you know now who you are in Christ Jesus? Hallelujah. You know whose you are, and you know who you are, amen? Praise God, hallelujah. We talked about last week, the fruits of righteousness. I just wanna go over a couple of scriptures. In Second Corinthians, chapter nine and ten, it talks about the fruit. And it says here in Second Corinthians, Paul writes to the church. He said, "Now heed that minister seed to the sower. Both minister bread for your food, and multiply your seed sown, and, pardon me, increases the fruit of your righteousness." How many know God is a God of increase? Amen, He will increase the fruit of our righteousness. Now, the fruit of righteousness is not just doing things right. It's not just having right actions, but it's carrying out the will of the Father. Whatever the will of God is, and you go and be obedient to, you are exercising the fruit of righteousness, doing what God has said for us to do, the way God says it for us to do, amen? And so, when he gave the Great Commission, you can find that over, over in Mark, chapter sixteen and verse fifteen, uh, when he talked, to talk about the Great Commission. He told the disciples to go ye into all the world and preach the gospel to every creature. So when you go out and you share the good news of the gospel with people, you are increasing the fruit of righteousness. Amen, you're doing what God tells us to do, obeying, obeying God. He, when he says, "Go ye to enter all the world." Not, each of us can't go to enter all the world, but there are so many little Jesus's everywhere. The fruit of righteousness is being increased even as we are here right now. Because right now, somebody is getting born again. Right now, somebody is getting back in fellowship. Right now, somebody is being raised up off their deathbed. Right now, somebody is, lives is being changed by the word of God. That is called the fruit of righteousness, amen? Jesus was a great example of that over in Acts, chapter ten and verse thirty-eight. And Scripture tells us here that he, how God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the Holy Ghost and with power, who went about doing what? Good and healing all that was oppressed of the devil, for God was with him. Jesus was then increasing the fruit of righteousness. So when you lay hands on the seed, that's increasing the fruit of righteousness. When you give somebody an encouraging word, that's the fruit of righteousness. How many you know we have to produce fruit? Amen. We have to, God is into production, amen? And so He's put everything on the inside of us to produce. And if we are not producing, amen, then we need to check the ground that that seed is in. Because every seed is supposed to reproduce after its own kind. And since we are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus, then righteousness ought to be coming out of us, right? We ought to be producing, amen? Praise God, because Jesus Himself, He says, "I am the vine." Come on now, somebody. And you are- Because Jesus himself, he says, "I am the vine," come on now, somebody, "and you are the branches." Come on now. Listen, I said, "If the root is good, then the fruit ought to be good." Amen. Praise God. So whatever we produce, it comes from the vine. 'Cause whatever is in the vine is in the branch. And if the branch is not producing, then what does he do? He chops that off. We don't wanna be chopped off, do we? Amen. We gonna produce, amen. So I just wanted to finish up with that about the production, about the fruit of righteousness. We all have the ability to produce. We all, God has given us everything that we need to produce fruits of righteousness. And so therefore, we just go about, just like Jesus did, doing good and healing. We are not the healer, but we are a vessel that God will use to lay hands or give people a scripture or pray with people. All of that is producing fruit, amen. And guess what? That fruit will remain. There won't be no end to it. It is eternal. It's life-giving, and it's gonna follow us right on into heaven. Amen. Because we are like Jesus, amen. Praise God. Let's talk about fearless faith. Come on, let's say fearless faith. Amen. What mighty things that we could do if we didn't have fear. Faith is just the opposite of fear. Faith is on the other side of fear's coin. If you had a coin in your hand, on one side would be faith, on the other side would be fear. So you and I have a choice. We either can walk in faith or we can walk in fear. If we choose to walk in fear, then faith won't produce. Because God did not give us a spirit of fear, did he? Amen. Let's look at that scripture over in 2 Timothy, chapter one and verse seven. Jesus' entire public ministry was about the fruits of righteousness, but Jesus wasn't afraid. You're not gonna find anywhere in the Bible where it says, Jesus says, "I was scared." You not gonna find that, amen. And in 2 Timothy, chapter one and verse seven, it says, and you know this scripture probably very well. It says, "For God hath not..." Come on, underline, highlight there. "God hath not given us the spirit of what?" Fear. So spirit, fear is a what? Spirit, amen. And fear is an evil spirit. So if fear come upon you, come on now, you can't stop fear from coming. I want you to understand that. You cannot stop it from coming, but once it come, you can do something with it. So God did not give us this spirit of fear. But what God did do is give us power, what? And of love and of a what? Sound mind, amen. Praise God. That's what he gave us. And so when fear does come, you and I have to open up our mouth and say something. That's how you stop fear in its track. You declare what God has said. No, God didn't give me anxiousness. No, because it's a process to get to this fear. The first thing gonna come is anxiousness or anxiety. And if you don't deal with it, it'll morph into fear. 'Cause the devil don't stop right at the door. You give him a foot in, he coming on in. So you have to, and we have to open up our mouth and say, "God did not give me a spirit of fear, but of power, of love, and of a sound mind." Praise God. So having faith in who you are in Christ Jesus dispels fear, amen. If you have faith, how many know everything that comes from God, we receive it by faith, amen. And just like fear does not come from God, but God does not give us a spirit of fear, but he does give us faith. So we have to choose to open up our mouth and say something when fear comes. Oh, and I heard Minister Margaret teaching about healing, amen. While you are believing God for your healing, you've got the word of God there, that your word that God has given you about healing. The devil don't care nothing about that. He does not care whether what you got. He wants to know, "Do you know what you got?" 'Cause he's gonna come for you. And while you yet speaking, the devil will give you a pain to knock you to your knees. But this is where it comes in, eh? You stand your ground. I might go down, but guess what? I'm standing my ground. By the stripes of Jesus, I am healed, amen. Your bill collectors could be calling. Come on now, somebody. And then your fear will come, "I gotta pay this bill on the fifteenth." Well, it's the fourteenth, and the money ain't came in yet. But I said, "Philippians 4:19, my God shall supply all of my need, my need, not yours, my need." So what if he don't come? But what if he do? But I'm gonna stand my ground. I'm gonna stand my ground. Praise God. Say this with me. Fear, I resist you in the name of Jesus, in his mighty name. I resist you. I refuse to fear. I refuse to be afraid. It is written in the word that he, God, has not given me a spirit of fear, but a power of love and my sound mind. That's how you gotta say it. I no longer have fear. You gotta sing it sometime. Come on now, somebody. I don't care how you get it out, but you get it out. And fear will run from you and start terror, amen. Because he don't care nothing about you having a whole bunch of words in your head. He wanna know, "Are you armored up?" Yeah, you gotta be armored up. You gotta be strapped, come on now. Wrapped, come on. Tied up in the word of God. Ephesians six, they put on the whole armor of God, amen, coming out half-dressed. Ain't got no word gird about in truth. Come on now, don't even know what the helmet is for. Come on, you don't care nothing about that? You better know that the helmet of salvation, your loins gird about with truth, your feet shod with the preparation of the gospel of peace. I choose peace, and I'm gonna walk in it. That why he said about the feet. And walking in it is opening up your mouth. The word of God must be activated. That's how you know who you are. You look foolish doing, because the things of this world is foolishness. You look foolish going around your house quoting and hollering the word of God. Amen. I don't care how foolish I look when my feet hit the floor, I'm gonna be walking in the word of God. Absolutely, amen. 'Cause Jesus wasn't afraid, was he? He wasn't afraid of demons. He wasn't afraid of disease. He wasn't afraid of lack. He wasn't afraid of the Pharisees or the Sadducees or whatever seed that came. He was not afraid. He said, "I and my Father, we are one." And he knew who his daddy was, right? He knew him and the father, they was one. And he knew that he had all of heaven arsenal at his back. Therefore, you can walk in the righteousness of God. If you know that all of heaven is at your disposal, you can open up your mouth and declare who you are in Christ Jesus. I don't care if it's in the White House or the Out House. You can say who you are. Can't nobody stop you? Nobody can stop me from saying, "You can say who you think I might be, but I know who I am." Absolutely. So we know who we are in Christ Jesus. So since the world even today is up in arms, there are so many things that are happening. Lives are going to be changed right now. But a lot of people don't know who they are in Christ Jesus, and they are full of fear. They are full of anxiety. But bless be the God of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who always causes us the triumph. I'm not living by this world's system. I'm living by the kingdom, and the kingdom never runs out. That government is already set, amen. Because Jesus has the government up on his shoulders, and he ain't bent nowhere. And if he's still standing, guess what? I'm still standing. Because the same spirit that raised him from the dead is in me. And I'm standing up in Christ. He is the head. I am the body. And the head don't go nowhere without the body. So I'm just saying. So... See, I preach my own self-happiness. Say, "I am well able." You are well able to overcome. Because we overcome by the blood of the Lamb and the word of our testimony. See what that means, part B of that scripture? The word of our testimony is when we open up our mouths and declare, "I am the righteousness of God." I'm in right standing with God. And the devil will say, "How do you know?" You said, "Because of the death, burial, and resurrection of the Lord Jesus Christ." No demon could hold him down. No grave could hold him. He got up so that you and I can get up, amen. Praise God. Say, "I am well able." We are just like Jesus was in the earth, amen. As he is in heaven, so are we in this earth. You sitting right there, me standing right here, have the same spirit that was in Jesus Christ is in you and me, amen. And so we have the riches of heaven on the inside of us, and we can say, "Because, oh, I was born this way." Get born again. Because when we got born again, all of heaven is on the inside of us. It's inside of you. God is in there, amen. Inside of us, the very same God that spoke things into existence, we too now, we speak things into existence. Because of how God did it, amen. Praise God. Let's look at this scripture. Go with Matthew, chapter nineteen. Matthew, chapter nineteen and verse twenty-six. Say, "All things are possible." Yes, all things are possible. But this is what Jesus said in Matthew, chapter nineteen and verse twenty-six. Amen. Praise God. He says, it says here, "But Jesus beheld them and said unto them, 'With men this is impossible.'" Matthew nineteen and twenty-six. With men is what? Impossible. But, somebody say but. But what? With God, all things are possible, only if you know who you are. That's how it's possible. If you don't know who you are, and I don't know who I am, and fear have gripped me, it would be impossible. But when I know who I am in Christ, all things are possible, amen. Praise God. So when we talk about miracles, signs, and wonders, they can become an everyday occurrence when you and I get the revelation that I am in Christ and Christ is in me. It doesn't matter what it is. It is possible with God, amen. When we believe it, we receive it by faith and act like it's so, amen. Act like it's so. Let me share a testimony with you. Some years ago, probably, it's maybe twenty-some years ago. I worked in Utica, and my car was stolen. And I had to get a ride from Jackson to Utica. And the young lady that was, she worked there too. She lived in Utica. But she brought her daughter to Jackson to school, 'cause she was in a private school, and drive back to Utica to work. So I was catching a ride with her. But on her day off, when her daughter didn't have to go to school, she didn't have to drive to Jackson. And she said to me one day, Sandra, she said, "I don't have to, I'm coming to Jackson on my day off, and I'm sorry, I can't pick you up. I can't come to Jackson and pick you up and then go back home and bring you back." And I said, "I understand. I understand. Thank you so much for even just giving me a ride." You know, I gave her gas money. I wasn't riding down there on air, y'all. But I went into my little apartment, and I said, I sat on the bed, and I said, "Lord, what am I gonna do? I need to get to work." And the Lord said to me, how many you know when you pray, God gonna give you something to do? He's gonna, somewhere, "I'm praying, asking God for this." He said, "Okay." He said, "I'm gonna give you something to do to obey, 'cause it's by faith." And God said to me, he says, "Act like you got your car." I said, "Now, how can I act like I got my car?" He said, "This is what I want you to do." I lived on the second, you go up the steps in the apartment, I'm on the second row of stairs up there, whatever you call it, on the second level. And he said, "I want you to go outside where you park your car. I want you to go and act like that car is there." He said, "I want you to get in it." I said, "Ooh." I looked out the curtain. The spot is empty. So I eased the door open. How about somebody sitting on the steps? Two guys sitting on the steps. So I go, I said, "Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me." I go down there in that parking space, I pull the door open. And I get in it. And I sat down. Closed the door. Get up and walk. They got up and walked in the house. They got up and went inside. I came back in my house, sat on the bed again. And then we had landlines. We didn't have cell phones then. Not five minutes, the phone rang. It was the Jackson Police Department. They said, "Ms. Logan, we have recovered your vehicle. It's in the pound. You'll have to come and retrieve it." I said, "Well, praise God." Act like it's so. So he gave me something to do, and it made me look foolish, but I act like it's so. I got in, I sat down, I shut the door. So you gotta, with God, all things are possible if you believe and obey, amen. Praise God. That's just a little side journey there. But righteousness means the ability, again, we said it several times, to stand in the presence of God without any fear, amen, or sin consciousness. Knowing that, hey, you could've missed it five minutes ago, but because you know who you are in Christ Jesus, there is no condemnation, amen. Let's look at that scripture. There is no condemnation. Romans, chapter eight and verse one. Romans, chapter eight and verse one. There, he's not condemning you, because he gave us 1 John 1:9, didn't he? So that we can get back in fellowship. You didn't lose your relationship. I didn't lose my relationship when I missed God. I am still God's child, but I did something that God was not pleased with. And he gave me an avenue for me to get back in fellowship with him. And he didn't condemn me, nor has he condemned you. Romans eight and one says, "There is therefore now no condemnation to them." Say, "That's me." Which are in Christ Jesus. Are you in Christ? Who walk not after the flesh, but what? After the spirit. We don't plan on sinning. I hope we don't. Well, I just plan, I'm gonna just go down here and do A, B, C, D. I'm planning on getting up in the morning and go. We don't do, believers don't do that, amen. Now, we might be tempted, come on, and we might miss it. Come on now, somebody. But there is no condemnation if you go and do what God tells you to do, amen. Say, "I'm not condemned." No, you're not condemned. Because when you know you are in Christ Jesus and you know the righteousness of God, you are in the righteousness of God, you walk in peace. You have the peace of God. Did you ever know that peace is a part of your righteousness? Who you are in Christ Jesus? If Christ is in us, Christ is in you, then what? Peace is in you. Joy is in you. Love is in you. Come on now. All of that is in you. And all we have to do as believers is exercise what is already in us, amen. Praise God. So we have the fruit of the spirit in us, amen. And when we, the enemy come against us and you start to feel, sense, feel down, that's the enemy bringing depression, depressed, pushing you down. But you, because we are the righteousness of God, we can turn... But you, because we are the righteousness of God, we can turn that by exercising the gifts that God had put on the inside of us. We got joy, amen, already downloaded in our spirit. So we can say, "The joy of the Lord is my strength." And you can raise your head up, amen? So we have to, see, it's by faith, it's all by faith. Yes, these things have, that will come to us, amen? But we don't have to receive it. We don't have, this is not a part of my notes here, but in Isaiah fifty-four, can you put that up on the screen, Isaiah fifty-four, I believe it's around verse thirteen or fourteen. We are familiar with Isaiah fifty-four seventeen, right? But I wanna read something to you, amen? That just come up in my spirit, Isaiah fifty-four. And we're gonna look at verse, I thought they had it up there, but let me see, can I find it? Verse thirteen, if you get there before I do. Isaiah fifty-four, H.I., there we go, fifty-four. Yes, that's it, what is that, Isaiah fifty-four, what? Fourteen, see, I gave a one holy. Because he just dropped it in my spirit, amen? Isaiah fifty-four fourteen, in what? Come on now, somebody. He said, that got me stuttering. He gonna teach me something, you know, that ain't part of my notes, but he says, "In what? Righteousness shall thou be what? Established." Come on, he's gonna, when you know who you are in Christ Jesus, I don't care what come against you. He said, "Thou shall be what? Far from oppression." Come on now, "For thou shalt not what? Fear," did we just get through talking about that? When you know, "And from what? Terror, for it shall not come near." Let's go on, thee, let's look at verse fifteen, praise God. Behold, somebody said, "Behold." They, who are they? Fear, oppression, terror, anxiety, all of them. They shall surely gather how? Together, they gonna lead up. Might one might come, but they gonna join together and create a force. He said, "They shall surely gather together." But what did God say? "But not by me." Come on now, somebody, now listen, here's the part B. "But whosoever shall gather together against thee shall what do what? Fall how? For your sake." When you know who you are. That means this, they all coming at you, fear, terror, oppression, depression, lying, war. They all lead up and they coming, you standing here, they coming for you. But you open up your mouth and you say, "I am the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. No matter what you doing, coming against me, you gonna fall right now." And what happened? What happened? God opens up heaven and sends an army for your sake, for my sake. I am not afraid, I will not fear, amen? He did it before and he'll do it again because in righteousness I have been established. So let's drop down, go down to verse seventeen, we might as well read it. He says here, "Hey, they weapons." He said, "But see, when you come strapped, when you come armored up." That's what that verse there mean. If you not armored up, it will cause you to fall. But he says, "No weapon that is formed against," say, "That's me." "Shall prosper and every tongue that shall rise against thee in judgment, thou shall condemn." Get, go to, there it is right there. This is the heritage, say, "That's my inheritance of the servants of the Lord and their righteousness what? Is of me." God is saying, listen, the same righteousness that's in me is in you and no demon in hell is coming against me because nobody's arm is long enough to box with me. That's what he's saying. Righteousness, that's what he's saying to you. I used that scripture when my son was in prison, my son, my middle boy. He had been sentenced to twenty-five years in prison. Some of y'all heard me say it. I didn't know what to do, how to do it, but God told me what to do. Why? He is the seed of the. That's mine. He my seed. And so when I realized that's my seed, he said, "I'm gonna show you how to get him out." He told me to write a confession. It's a legal document and it's a declaration. He said, "I want you to get up and pray it every morning until the sun come up." Obedience, he giving me something to do. Because I said, "I don't know if he, Lord, I don't know if he guilty or not." And God says, "I sit on a throne of justice." He said, "I sit on a throne of justice. Even if he was guilty, I will show my mercy to whom I please." That's what he told me. So I did what he told me. And I said to the Lord, I said, "Lord, I thank you for this." And as I did what God told me to do, God turned that. My son wrote his own appeal. He went to the law library in the prison. How many you know God is in the prisons? You know he right there, right? He went there, he wrote, he found cases just like his, talking about the righteousness of God. He found cases just like his, wrote his own appeal. He ain't have no money for no lawyer, so he had a public defender. So he called him up and say, "I'd like you to file this appeal for me." The public defender said, "I find no appeal for no inmate." He said, "Let me propose this to you. If you file this appeal and the Supreme Court overturn it, how will it look on your resume?" The man said, "I'll come get it." He filed it and the Supreme Court of Florida overturned the twenty-five year case. And he free today. He free today. Absolutely, he served one year of twenty-five years. And I believe God let him stay there to teach him something. Now it's Jesus in the morning time, Jesus at noonday, Jesus at midnight because of the righteousness of God. So, what you saying Pastor Logan? I'm saying this, every word of God comes with power. The righteousness is from God. He said it in Isaiah fifty-four, "It is of me." And one of the scriptures, if you put Isaiah fifty-four seventeen up there in the Message Version, because this is where the Lord, this is how I wrote my confession, my declaration, if you will. I found this scripture because I'm searching the scriptures while he writing his appeal in the natural, I'm writing minds in the spirit. He, I didn't know what he was doing and I don't know if he know what I was doing, but listen, fifty-four seventeen, there it is right there in the mess, is that the message? He says, "But no weapon that can hurt you have ever been forged. Any accuser who takes you to where? Will be what? Answer what? There it was right there." Because why? The righteousness of God, case dismissed. When you take the word of God and apply it and be obedient. And when we do this, guess what? There's an end game in this. And the end game is found in second Timothy chapter four and verse eight. Let's read second Timothy chapter four and verse eight because Paul writes to the young pastor Timothy and he tells Timothy about this crown of righteousness. Now, there are four incorruptible crowns that believers would get when they get to heaven. It's four types of crowns. But one of them is a crown of righteousness. And the, well, you say, "Well, what are they?" There's the crown of life, the crown of rejoicing, the crown of glory, and the crown of righteousness. And look what Paul says here to Timothy. He says, "Henceforth there is laid up for me a crown of righteousness which the Lord," who is he? "The righteous judge shall give me at that day and not to me only, but to all them that love his appearing," that's us. We got a crown when we exercise our faith by saying, by hearing. Faith come by how? Hearing. The more you declare God's word about a subject, the more faith you have, amen? The little declaration, little hearing, little faith. But when you and I know who we are in Christ and we continue to say, "The Lord has already declared me righteous." But don't you know what you did back then? Yeah, that was then, this is now. I switched kingdoms, amen? I'm in a different kingdom now, amen? Praise God. And we have, when we walk in righteousness, God has laid up for us a crown of righteousness. Praise God, hallelujah. Let's look at this scripture right here and we're coming down the pipe here. Romans chapter eight, amen, and verse thirty-three. How many you know can't nobody accuse you? God ain't gonna, who gonna, who shall? Come on, when we right, we're God. Come on now, Romans eight thirty-three, it says that, "Who shall lay anything," somebody say anything, "to the charge of God's elect?" Say, "That's me." We are God's elect. Who shall lay anything to the charge of God's elect? It is God that justify it. God is the judge, amen? Now, you might be judged by an earthly judge, amen? But the ultimate judge is God. I don't care what lay, he, God has the last say because the heart of the King is in the hand of the Lord. Nobody can lay, it doesn't matter what they say about you, it don't matter what folks say about you, it's what you say about yourself. It doesn't matter what they say, praise God. When we have, walking in righteousness, our heart is filled with peace, our heart is filled with joy. We know who we are, we are as he is in heaven, so are we are in the earth. Where is he at right now? Seated at the right hand of the Father, that's where you and I are positionally speaking and everything is under his feet and since I am in him and he is in me and his feet is my feet and his ear my ear, I'm hearing what he's saying and the devil is under my feet. That's who he is. And so what do we do? We have everything at our disposal, knowing who we are in Christ Jesus. Say, "I know who I am." And when you know who you are, that is called confidence, confidence. And when you are confident, you don't come in with your head down. You come in walking straight and tall with your head up. You look at the devil right in his face, amen? You stand flat foot, stand your ground because you know who you are in Christ Jesus. This is the confidence that we have in him, that if we ask him anything according to his will, he hear us. What kind of talk is that? Come on, what kind of confidence? You cocky, you talking about he gonna hear you? Yes, me, amen? I have confidence in that. He who have begun a good work in me will complete it. That's how you talk, talk like that. Not, "Well, I hope he do, I hope he will." Child, I don't know, it's rough out here in these streets. Yes, you know how people talk. But we don't talk like that as believers, do we? Amen? God here says, and let's look at this scripture, Isaiah sixty-two and then that's in verse one. Because righteousness is going forth even as we are right here tonight, praise God. Isaiah sixty-two and one, it says, "For Zion's sake." How many you know Zion is the church, right? And we are what? The church. It says, "For Zion's sake," Old Testament, "Will I not hold my peace? And for Jerusalem's sake, I will not rest until the righteousness thereof what? Goeth forth as brightness and the salvation thereof as a lamp that burneth," period. What God is saying in the Old Testament, that righteousness was gonna come forth and it came through Jesus Christ. He said he's gonna do it for Jerusalem and for Zion's sake. Well, we are Zion right now, amen? Because of what Christ did. Let me read it from the Amplified Classic Version. It says, "For Zion's sake, I, will I, Isaiah, not hold my peace, come on? And for Jerusalem's sake, I will not rest," God said, "until her imputed righteousness and vindication goeth forth as brightness and her salvation radiates as does a burning torch." God says, "I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, hey, I'm not gonna hold my peace." He told Isaiah, "Don't hold your peace, you keep preaching, Jesus is coming, Jesus is coming. Jesus is the righteousness of God." Did he come over two thousand years ago? Did the word of Isaiah come to pass? Guess, and since it came to pass, are you born again? That's up to you. Well, then you are a bright light. You are not a dark, something under a bushel. When you walk into an atmosphere of darkness, the demons start to flee. And if you don't know who you are, they'll challenge you. They, because they know who you are, right? They did not know who the sons of Sceval, they said, "Paul, I know, Jesus, I know, but who are you?" And you know what outcome that was, amen? So we know who we are in Christ Jesus, say, "I am the righteousness of God." Amen, praise God. There is no such thing as growing in righteousness, there's no growth in righteousness. Amen, you're not going from righteousness to righteousness as we go from faith to faith. When you and I got born again, we became righteous. No righteous need to be added to it and none is taken away. Whatever was in Jesus is in us, amen? So we are what the word says that we are and we should act like that. We should declare that. Very few people have faith in their righteousness. If you ask a average believer, if you just did a poll, then you ask an average believer, just somebody, do you know who you are in Christ Jesus? Not to judge him, but just to show you because the average believer does not know who they are in Christ. They leave so much on the table. How you know that Pastor Logan? Because that was me, the average believer, until I was taught the word of God concerning righteousness. And I read it in the book for myself. So you being in a church like this and you're learning about who you are in Christ Jesus as a result of this class, now your eyes of understanding Ephesians one is being enlightened so you can know what is the hope of your calling that is in Christ Jesus. And where you are going, now you can walk in fearless. You know that that's part of your inheritance because you read it in the will. And if you don't show up at the reading of the will, you don't know what's in it for you. Right now, you're reading the will, the last will and testament that Jesus left for us, showing us what we have, who we are in it, in Christ, amen? So we no longer have a sin conscious, we have a righteous conscious, we have a faith conscious. And our faith is being built up moment by moment. Every class that you have, your faith is being built in there. So the entire problem of unri- So, the entire problem of unrighteousness has already been taken care of through the death barrel and resurrection of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Why? Because God said it, and God does not lie. He's not a man that he should lie, nor the son a man that he shall repent. He tells us the truth. Now, it's up to us to receive that truth, right? The word of God, your Bible, is a contract. It's a new covenant, amen. And in that covenant, that covenant is a legal document. And the judge who wrote it is God. Everything in it is true. It's not a dead doc-document. It's a living document. The word of God is living. It's alive. Hebrews 4:12. "For God's word is quick," that mean it's active. "Is quick and what? Powerful." Come on now. "And sharper than any." It's alive. See on the pages, the books you have, your Bible's in your lap there, that don't mean a hill of being, till you take them words off that page and put it in your mouth so that you can hear it. Keep it before your eyes, amen? Because your eyes, your mouth, and your ears are gates to our spirit. And so you gotta be always at the gate. The word, listening to the word, speaking the word, meditating on the word, day and night. And as a result, your faith is going, is growing, is growing. You might, every man was dealt a measure. But when it come to righteousness, that's called, that's what I'm talking about. Minister Margaret talk about healing. But my assignment is righteousness. And when you talk about righteousness, you gotta have faith in it. If you don't have faith in it, it won't work for you. And when you don't know who you are, the devil will steal from you. Cause that's what he come to do. Steal, kill, and destroy. That's what he, that's his assignment. But, "No weapon formed against," say me? "Shall prosper." Why? Because you know who you are in Christ Jesus. You, how do you know? You, it was written. You read it. We've read scripture. And when we read the scripture, those scriptures, that word, those words that have been spoken, they are a living force. It is a living force that we build our confidence upon as children of God. As the head go, so do the body. I never saw God back down in the, I, in the, I ain't never, I never saw Jesus back up. He walked straight through a crowd of folks trying to kill him, and the force, somebody said, "The force is with me." Yeah, when you walk, the force is with you. Amen. Moving things out of the way, cause you know who you are. Cause you got on the what? Shield of faith. Come on now. Head with the crown, what? The salvation of crown, the salvation on your head. Come on now. Your feet shod with the preparation of the gospel. The word of God on your feet, and it's a lamp unto your feet and a light unto your path. The lamp is for you to see right here, but the lamp is what's coming down the road for you. You can see it. Because you know who you are. We are walking by faith and not by sight. So that's the word. God bless y'all. I enjoyed this class. I hope you, uh, will utilize it in your everyday life. Amen. Praise God, hallelujah. Well, let's stand to our feet. Uh, I want to thank you all also for everybody volunteering. How many of you enjoyed, uh, your indoor picnic? We thank God for our pastor. Today is Pastor Leslie's birthday today. Amen, we celebrate her, celebrated her on, uh, Sunday. Amen. And on their behalf, thank you all so much for blessing her. Just turn to a neighbor and, and say to them, let's make a declaration as we leave. Say, neighbor. Know this. You are the righteousness of God. Neighbor, know that God is in you. Christ is in you. The hope of the Lord. You are right with God. So act like it. Amen.